Okay. The meeting will come to order. Today's December 3rd at 6:00 PM. Liz, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Archie? Councilmember Bass?
Here.
Councilmember Miles?
Here.
Councilmember Zajac?
Here.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Here.
Councilmember Brian Archie will lead us in our opening up society.
Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee and thy wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound to thy greater honor and glory. We ask that you lay your healing hand over this community and this room. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
Amen.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this evening we have no public purists. And we have no presentation, so we will move on to the speakers on legislative items. Liz, do you have a list?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Tanya Barone, Agenda Item Number Two.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on Agenda Item Number Two, to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a change order in the amount of $57,700 for it being necessary to pay the cost of an additional building function analysis on a vacant building, the Carnegie Building, which was, used to be the old library on Main Street. They want, he wants to pay this professional consultant that's currently hired as a consultant for the Duck Island project and pavilion. The pavilion, we've nicknamed the Molasses Project. I don't know if anybody's aware of how slow that's going, but anyway, I won't get off topic. I want to know how the mayor can slide this company over to a completely other project. It's upsetting as a resident to see what's happened with our Hyde Park Ice Pavilion. When the council votes on something, the mayor doesn't like it, he threatens, he locks doors, and then he puts another vendor in there and nobody knows what's going on with that vendor. There's things being purchased, is he paying rent, there's always unanswered questions. Another thing, the dog shelter too, that's another project that is still not up and running. I think that we need to keep RFPs going out for specific projects and not sliding vendors from project to project. I think that's only fair. And what are our plans with the Carnegie Building? Do we have plans for that building? And when are those, is it, why are we spending money at the end of this budget season? Do we have money allocated for a project for that building? These are all things that we want to know. To spend $57,700 at the end of the year on this consulting company that's on a zipper project, I don't think that's fair and equitable for the residents here when we should be putting that out to bid if that's an entirely separate project. And where is that money coming from? Do we have money in the budget for another project right now? I mean, there's got to be a plan for that building if we're already putting another, putting this consultant there. So we shouldn't be sliding people from one project to another project. That should be an RFP, just like we did for the Hyde Park Pavilion, but we'll see how that turned out. And as far as like the budget goes, the mayor, he's just gonna do what he wants anyway because he did it last year. And then there's not going to be a 4-1 up here, so why do we even have a city council anymore? I don't understand because he just does what he wants anyway.
Is Janine Gallo, Agenda Item Number Two?
Okay. Going off what she said, $57,700 isn't too bad compared to the animal shelter which you paid almost, well, you paid $13,000 for the contractor to say, yeah, that could be a dog shelter. Then you paid 200 something, I don't know the exact numbers, for an architect picture that no one's ever seen for how many years, and you all sit up there and you can see it anytime you want, but you chose not to. This is the same as this $57,000. You're gonna vote yes, because that's what you do. It's a 3-2 at best, so it's just gonna go through. Even if it doesn't, it's gonna go through anyways, but you're not even asking questions what it's for. What it's for. You ripped a ice skating rink to pieces with its potholes, and all of a sudden now it smells clean. When I walk into the ice rink, it smells clean now, like it, like there was something wrong with it. It was probably the only thing going smooth in Niagara Falls. And now whoever ran it, just did a terrible job, and this guy, I don't even know who the guy is, fell down from heaven, is just the savior of the ice rink. I mean, and the dog park, the parking lot's gonna be, you know, state of the art parking lot. But the ice rink, I'm sure they'll come up again with money for that. It's a scam. All this fluffing of money, Pax is gonna be gone, she'll be in Florida, she doesn't care, and I'm happy for you. But the, you know, 50-something million dollars that's just thrown all over the place and nothing was done. And Mr. Transparency, who voted down the, the dog shelter and wants, you know, transparency, they already know, you already know what's gonna, you don't even know what's gonna be there. And, and RFPs don't come out until he knows who's gonna, he's gonna give the job to. That's why the dog park's dragging. That's all.
Okay, any administrative updates?
There are two administrative updates, and the first one is from me. At the last meeting, a speaker got up and talked about alleged overages at the dog shelter, the temporary animal dog shelter on Grand Island. I have the advantage of being able to turn to the city clerk and ask her a question because the city clerk supervises the activity at the temporary dog shelter, including all invoices. And she was able to quickly tell me that there had been no overages at the dog shelter. So someone in the, sitting out there in the pews is getting incorrect information or misinterpreting the information that she is receiving. The second part of the administrative update is going to be given by Kevin Forma, our Director of Planning. Kevin, come on up.
So good evening, everyone. I'm sure most of you probably know who I am. For those in the audience that don't, my name's Kevin Forma. I am the current, current and outgoing Director of City Planning. For those of you who have not heard, I will be leaving city employment on this, on the 17th of this month. So I'm sure many of you are asking, why am I here? So frankly, I've asked to come here. And I've asked to come here because there are many in this community and even some on this body who will attempt to utilize my departure to spread misinformation and chaos. The second record's straight, I'm not leaving city employment because there was any pressure applied, nor was I asked to leave, nor was it due to any actions, however lowbrow that were taken during the most recent campaign. The sole reason for my departure is that I have been afforded the opportunity to work regionally in Western New York with the state. And it is simply in the best interest for me and my family to, to move on. During my tenure here, I have personally rebuilt this department from the ground up, hiring a very competent and professional staff who I will be leaving to keep up the important work of the department. In just three and a half short years, with the support of this administration, the department has secured over $3 million for improvements to parks and pools, facilitated the surplus sale of vacant property, netting the city approximately half a million dollars, and secured nearly $11 million for streetcapes improvements along Main Street. In addition, the department has obligated over $600,000 in DRI funding for small business improvements, for funding, and for funding improvements to DeCamillo's Bakery on Linwood. If all of this was not enough, the department facilitated becoming a part of the pro housing community, which leads us to future funding opportunities. We also facilitated changes to the FEMA flood maps, which relieved over 1,700 homes of the burden of carrying flood insurance within the Gil Creek Corridor. And we are in the process of finalizing the city's local waterfront revitalization program, which will be a guide for, for local and state development, providing all citizens with a voice and access to the city's waterfront. There are numerous economic development projects we also accomplished in coordination with our partners from the state. This includes the completion of the city market study and the initiation of the Phase One design. The acquisition and sale of properties along the Bridge District, including the sale and proposed reuse of the Genes Building for mixed-use development. This does not even scratch the surface of the internal organization and the day-to-day activity that my staff and I have, have dedicated our time to ensuring that the community moves forward. My departure is actually bittersweet. I'm grateful to many in the community who have embraced me and recognized the hard work that I, my staff, and this administration have put into further the growth and development of the city. We've been successful in moving forward, despite efforts by some individuals and organizations to derail real progress by simultaneously putting forth no real ideas or projects. I've worked in many places, but I see here firsthand how specific organizations and individuals can create chaos as a means of furthering their own interests. The challenge for most of you here and the city moving forward is, are you as individuals going to continue to go along the same path that has not served the best interests of the city? Or are you going to take bold action and come forth with new ideas and new ways of doing business in the city to continue to move the city forward? The city deserves better. The city can accomplish so much if the people can come together, unite, and say enough. Enough of the speculative developers who only goal is to drain, drain this community of the precious resources. Enough of the individuals who continually seek to divide the community for personal gain. And enough of the old ways of doing business which have led to stagnation and lost opportunity. Look to the future. Unite as a community, and the city will continue to move along in positive ways which will lift and benefit all citizens, not just those who seek to line their pockets. This is a great city with many challenges, but together you can overcome these challenges and move forward. Together you can thrive. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to seeing the progress that the city will make. Thank you all for your help, and thank you all. I don't want to cry here, but it's been three and a half years, and some of you here have been family, and some of you here have challenged me. I never back down from a challenge, as I'm sure many of you are aware. So deep heart to thank to all of you, all the staff and the community. So thank you.
I'd like to just say, Kevin, thank you very much for the last two years. I really appreciate the work you've done.
It's been three years.
Well, I've been here for two years. I've been here for two. I appreciate all the work you've done. Thank you. All right. Moving on now to community announcements?
Yes. Paws in the Falls is actually having a photo with Claws on December 13th between 4:00 and 7:00 PM. That's at 2070 Cuyuga Drive Extension, 14304. I've been to one of those before, they're actually super cool. You definitely want to bring your kids and, and of course, go, go view the actual spot if you haven't seen it before, it's, it's an amazing place. But yeah, that's Paws in the Falls, that's on 2070 Cuyuga Drive Extension, 14304. That's on the 13th of this month between 4:00 and 7:00 PM. Yes.
We have Jingle, Jingle Falls, December 7th, 5th through the 7th, starts at 5:30 Friday, December 5th. The downtown area, the corridor has free parking for anybody who wants to attend. Also, on Saturday, December 6th, the Fireman's Telethon at Niagara Falls High School from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It'll also be covered on Spectrum Channel 1302, 1302, if anybody's interested in that.
Down at the Jingle Falls, so if you have an opportunity to support small local businesses, I know a lot of the young people from the entrepreneurship program will be down there selling some things, so if you have opportunity to participate, that would be cool.
Okay. Moving on to Section Four of the agenda, are there any motions by roll call vote to amend the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as provided?
Motion.
David Zajac provided a motion, roll call vote. Any opposition?
Second. Second.
And any opposition? All right, Liz?
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac? Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Five A's, motion carried. Okay, there are no minutes to review this week, so we'll move on to item number six. I don't see any updates from the clerk's office. I assume there aren't none?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, moving on to the agenda items. We are now in Agenda Item, Legislative Item Number One. May I have a motion for item number one?
I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the city's hourly workers who belong to local 9434-04, which will include terms negotiated with and agreed to by the local as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated November 26, 2025.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Tracy made the motion, Brian second. Okay, any, I will not restate the motions unless I'm asked to specifically do so. So are there any questions or information requests at this time?
Just interested, it's, do we have a tally of the votes as far as the outcome of the votes, or was it just a majority vote from the steelworkers?
Well, I only know that there's a majority vote approving, I don't know the precise number.
I spoke with Angel today, she said it was overwhelmingly approved by the American File. She didn't give me a number, but she said it was overwhelmingly approved.
No, as long as it's a majority, it's not for me to say. To oppose it.
Not the entire number, I know 16 to 18 of them voted it down, to my understanding, and that's from talking to one of the employees, I don't, I don't know the entire count.
Do you know roughly the number of people who voted?
Who voted?
No, but I know only 16, 18 of them voted it down, and they knew they were in the, in the minority.
Any opposition?
I had a question, I'm sorry. Mr. Boyd, just to clarify, obviously people in the area may not know, there was more changes than just the five, proposed changes than just the five that are on this agenda item, correct?
That's correct, and, and the, if you look at the mayor's memo, the second paragraph, it does say, including the following key features, and they give the list of five, so it's not purported to be a glossary summary of what was negotiated by the team, negotiating teams who reached the tentative agreement. But because we were able to speak around 5:30 this evening, in response to your inquiry, I did find a copy of the memorandum of agreement, it's not signed, but it's what the union votes on. And I take copies at the end of the document, three pages. And so that you understand the code is in the left margin, if you see a number that's circled, like on first, on first page, number one and two are circled, that means that these are the two of the items that made it into the summary of the mayor's memo. If there's no circle around it, then it's not in the mayor's memo, and the conclusions it does do not extend directly to financial, immediate financial impact to the city. And if you go to page three, you'll see items three, four, and five are circled, so that tells you that those items were included in the mayor's memo. So if you have any questions about this, this new information, please feel free to ask.
So, yes, just to follow up on that, I thank you for this, and I see you asked me to walk up. So essentially, the points that we have here on the agenda item are kind of like highlights or, I guess, Cliff Notes of what's on this agreement, correct?
That's correct, and actually, you're not looking at an official agreement, right, the official agreement is to be finalized, approved by negotiating teams before signatures are put on, and then it has to be printed, so there's a lot of steps involved. Your, your, your summary's correct, it's like a Cliff Note or a Highlight.
Any opposition?
So, just, just to make sure, so for clarity, the items that are presented to us initially are those that deal directly with finance, right?
That's right.
Which is, which is for us?
Yes, yes. The, the collective bargaining agreements, they all contain clauses that say, nothing disagreement is affected as it relates to money, and that's approved by the city council. So your, your approval tonight, it's not just necessary to permit the mayor to sign the finalized agreement, which is hopefully, as I said, completed, approved, and signed by all parties by the end of the year, but it's also essential that the controller know that you approved it tonight, so that if there are items that have to be paid, for example, there's, there's a 3% increase for all of these paid, for the controller to actually start reading those changes, she needs to know, her office needs to know that the council approved this agreement. So this critical that, that be approved, so that, that be.
I'm asking.
Imagine, it's a huge, it's a huge undertaking, a huge process to key in 3% change to every individual's payroll record.
I'm, I'm asking more, more so that the people here understand and, and what we know.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Any opposition? All right, Liz, call the roll voice.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bass?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zajac?
Right before I vote, obviously, again, Mr. Boyd, thank you for this information here, and for clarifying what's on the agenda in front of us. Obviously, the union membership, I think someone said that overwhelmingly voted to approve this. So it's coming to us to now push it back to the five points. Completely understand that, that's how business is done. I guess I will push back on the sense of the council showing me concern with the financial portion, whereas I think if we can get the Cliff Notes of these five items, I would request that any contracts going forward, we get the Cliff Notes of everything that's being changed.
Yes.
I think we're having some pretty big contracts come up, and I think while the financial side is obviously important, I think the council deserves to know what else is being changed.
Yes.
And I think, obviously, once we get the, ideally, the Cliff Note version or the highlights of it, then we can do our research and reach out to individuals of the union or whoever we may have to reach out to get that clarification. Again, I appreciate everything that our city workers do, every department, from corporation councils, city clerk, DPW, so my, my vote to this is yes, I'm just hoping for future reference for these contract changes, that we get the Cliff Notes of every change.
Let me just make sure to, for clarity, I'm not saying, don't tell us all of it. I'm saying that for the, the item, the way that it was brought to us, not that we shouldn't be concerned, that's not, just, just to correct you, so that we're clear, that's not what I'm saying.
Council Chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five A's.
Five A's, the motion carried. Item number two, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a change order, number three, in the amount of $57,700, such expense being necessary to pay the cost of an additional building function analysis and recommendation report for the Carnegie Building required of the city, of the city's professional consultant, Troutman Associates, as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated November 26, 2025.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, we have Tracy, motion, David with the second, information requests?
Yes. So I got a few questions. Since the Troutman Association, Associates already have like a contract with unrelated architectural design and work, could we clarify whether the original contract explicitly allows adding a new project, scope such as the Carnegie Building and, and the function analysis and through what change order? If so, what section of the contract actually authorized this expansion?
Well, all of our contracts are subject to amendment, they can be amended, whether it includes the clause that you're looking for or not. So it's not a requirement of contract law that the contract say in specific terms, this agreement can be amended. The fact of the matter is, is that, you know, you pick any contract in New York State, regardless of whether that clause is there or not, it can be amended.
Okay. All right. Well, my second question is, is adding this $57,000 study to an existing architectural contract, does that comply with our procurement regulations? And should this be a competitive bid separate from, you know, as a separate professional service contract, is this like the legal standing with this and, and what justifies kind of bypassing the RFP process?
Those are great questions, because it gives me an opportunity to probably remind you of something that you, you already know on some level. It's an engineering architect firm, it's a professional firm. In terms of the New York State law regarding bids, which is general municipal law 103, professional service firms are exempted from that. There is no requirement to put out a bid for a professional service firm, okay? That's number one. Number two is, is that similarly, there's no, there's no requirement to put out a request for proposal. Professional firms can be hired and are hired without going to bid and without going to RFP. And that's the state of New York, New York law. So those are good questions, because it helps clarify that for a contract of this size, $57,000 and some change for a professional organization like Troutman, which has done work for the city before, no bidding required, no RFP required, therefore, no violation of our procurement policies.
And the last question that I have, you know, before approving this expansion, does the change order clearly define the scope, the deliverables, the deliverables and deadlines, liabilities? Because, you know, and, and would it put the city at a financial risk under the existing agreement? I'm, I'm just asking these questions to see if, you know, whether the mayor's justification is legally sound. One, and whether the city is really following our procurement law, of course, and whether the council is protected from approving a vague expansion.
So I, I answered the question, legality.
Yeah, and, and that, that portion, yes.
In terms of the change order, this is sufficient, because it specifies the building, and it specifies the end product, the building you study. So.
Is there, is there anything specific that, that's going, that's actually going to take place with that building? Like, as far as?
It's going to depend, it's going to depend on the building you study. It's been vacant for a long time, it's in pretty good structural shape, it wasn't always in good structural shape, so, you know, the building needs to be analyzed, and, and Troutman is going to do that, and tell us what the building could be used for. I mean, it's, it's an essential step to figuring out what is the future of that building. It's been vacant for quite a while. And whether it's to find a tenant, whether it's to put it up for auction, or do something else with the building, we need information to help guide us.
Anyone else? Opposition?
I believe that if we're going to, I believe in the, they may be exempt from the actual R F P process, but for me, it's another form of cherry picking, because sometimes I feel like we're in a space where we're like, okay, we have to find the best deal for the city, and we, so we're going to go through the R F P process, but then all of a sudden here, we have a fifty-seven thousand dollar situation staring us in our face, and there is no other, you know, there, there's no other competitors, you know, solicited for the same type of services. So, yeah, it would be kind of tough for me to go along with this, because I feel like it does, it does bypass a, a process that's, you know, fair. A fair process, and it deals with our, i- it deals with, it deals with dollars, so, yeah, that's mine.
Anybody else?
Oppose.
Okay, with that, Liz, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
No.
Councilmember Zeta?
Yes.
Council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Four yeas, one nay.
Four yeas, the motion's carried. Action item, legislative item number three, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, for item number three, I move the council vote to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a change order, number one, final, to the agreement with Semado Brothers Construction, Inc., in the amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred fifteen dollars, such expense being necessary to pay the cost of additional twenty twenty-five drainage structure repair and replacement work, as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
May I have a second, please? Second. Okay, we have Brian seconded, Tracy made the motion, and any information requests?
Yeah, I, I missed this, what's the, what was the location? I think I missed asking the question.
Did you say location?
For where the actual work was being done.
It's, it's all over the city, I mean, there's, there's many locations throughout the city, it's, it's a, it's a, a general contract to, to repair things like catch basins and curbing, and the engineering department identified multiple locations, and then what they're telling us is that after that inventory, for example, twelve additional precast basins were found that needed to be replaced outside of the original scope of the agreement with Semado Brothers. So it's a change order to expand it, to include additional work.
And so if I'm thinking about what this is, there's no cost share with the water board or anything like that for?
Definitely not on curbing, whether.
Not for the curb, but for the water leak.
The, the catch basins could possibly be cost share situation, possibly. That's the only thing that I can think of on this list.
But it would be listed.
You know, the pavement restoration is definitely us, the curbing is definitely us entirely, without any cost share.
Yeah. So, is, so, so it's not, the, the, the spaces that are being worked on, there's no list of those spaces? Because I'm just wondering where we come up with the seventy-seven thousand dollars? There has to be like a, a number of places, and how mu- how much work has to be done for us to, you know, approve this specific amount?
Well, if, if it's a requirement, someone could have asked me for that before the meeting, and I could have gotten the information. But you see, now, I, I'm not in a position to tell you where, where those twelve precast basins were, were, are going to be placed.
I understand this unfortunate, the, the, I guess the unfortunate part is, is that, again, and I've said this multiple times, when we don't have a city controller sitting here that has that information.
The city controller would know.
There were no, or, or.
Would not know the.
What, the administration, or who, who would know?
Well, it's not the city controller, I can tell you that.
Okay, so, I mean, because we're talking about, so here's the finances, who, who came up with the fin, who came up with the seventy-seven thousand dollars?
Well, that, that's the, that's the quote from Semado Brothers to do the additional work, using the unit prices already approved in the contract, right? So, you know, the, the precast basin will have a dollar amount for each precast basin, and so if, if they're told they need to do twelve, and Semado looks at their contract and says, well, it's, I'm making up a number, it's fifty dollars for catch basin, times twelve, so you have to pay us this amount for that part, that's how it's made, that's how it's come up. It's not something that the, that the city controller or any other administrator comes up with and says, this is what you're going to do it for, Semado Brothers. They identify, they, they go through the work that is assigned, and run the numbers through their contract, and say, yeah, we can do, we can do this additional work for X amount of dollars. That's not a change order process.
I guess layman's terms?
That's layman's terms.
No, 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 from, from me, I'm talking about from me. Layman's terms, how I would question this, is how do we justify this number when we don't have any specifics? Like, when we don't have, like, it's seventy-seven thousand, and, and, and someone came up with this number, right? The, the, the company.
Someone is the company.
The, right, the company, so, who has the, who, do, do they, do they give specifics? Or do they just come, like, with a number off the side of their heads, and they're saying, okay, it's going to be seventy-seven thousand dollars, and we want you guys to vote on it, because I don't want to do blank checks up there.
Look, if there was additional information that you needed on this item, I wish you'd ask for it before tonight's vote. This is very typical of the change orders you voted on in the past.
Yeah, I think, I think it's simple, I think it's very simple, but I digress, we can move on.
And, and I'll say, just, just for clarity, because I, this is, I think, aligned with a lot of different change orders we voted on. So this allocation, that's here, for the, you know, price per unit per work, if anything were to exceed that, it would need to come back to the council, correct?
That is correct, as addition, as additional change order, that's how the money is controlled through these incremental change order. This is, now, this has been sent to us, you can tell from the mayor's memo, it's change order number one, but it's also listed as final, and that means that, that the contractor is, the contractor, the administration is not going to come back with an additional change order after this one.
Right.
This will complete their work, and once, once that work is done, that contract will be deemed finished and closed.
But, but so, are, are, are they doing this right now? Is the work happening right now in this weather? Like, do you know that?
I mean, it's probably too late to do pavement restoration, but there's no reason why catch basin work can't be done.
The only reason I'm asking is because, is because, like, so I get it, I'm wondering where they are too, and I would say, I don't, I don't mind holding two weeks to get the, the location information, I, because I'm, I'm going to vote for it, but I would say, I would also vote for holding, just to get the location information.
So you, you want to know the.
Yeah, we're the next to last.
The streets where the twelve precast basins are.
Yeah, at least we know where they're, we know where they're going, so we can answer the question when people ask us.
What about, what about the Acheson Avenue rail, do you need location on that?
Well, it, it's given, Acheson Avenue.
And then a hundred twenty feet of curbing, that could be, that could be, you know, ten foot on one street, a hundred on another.
It, it could, it could, but I think if we have, I think if we have, hold on, please, one second. I think if we have something, so that we can relay it to the folks, I think that's reasonable. Whatever, whatever we can get.
As I, as I said, this is a very typical change order. And unfortunately, I don't have, I don't have the location information that you now asked me for, so.
Make a motion. You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I, I would, I would motion just to, not the table, but the whole.
Postpone?
Postpone till next meeting.
Fine, you're making a motion to postpone.
Yeah.
Second.
Yeah.
So we have, before, Brian made a motion to postpone.
Like, I'm, again, I'm for it, but I'd like to postpone.
Councilmember Miles seconded that motion.
I'm not doing it right now.
Right, it's not, it's not time sensitive, so it's not, it's not a rush, just getting information, kind, kind of, kind of like the trees.
Okay. All right.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Uh, it's next week, or next meeting, right? As long as it's next meeting, then yes, that's fine.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zeta?
Yes.
Council chairperson Perry?
I, I'm, I'm really, really don't like to postpone these things when we have the business in front of us, and we have time to get, but I will go along with the rest of the council, and go ahead and postpone it with them also.
Five yeas.
So the five yeas, the motion to postpone?
Till December seventeen.
Item number three?
Till December.
Till December seventeen.
Yeah, he'll get it to us in a day or two, until, and then this will go.
December seventeen. All right. Okay, moving on to item number four, may I have a motion, please?
I move the council vote to, uh, vote to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the successful R F Q respondent, Fourth Generation Construction, Inc., to remove the fishing dock from Hyde Park Lake, as more fully outlined in the mayor's recommendation memo dated November twenty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Okay. Tracy made the motion, Brian seconded it. And information requests? Any opposition? Okay with that, Liz, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Archie?
Yes.
Councilmember Banks?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Zeta?
Yes.
Council chairperson Perry?
Yes.
Five yeas.
Five yeas, the motion's carried. That completes our legislative items for tonight. We'll move on to a public speaker for the good of the community. Liz, do you have a list?
Yes, sir. So our first speaker is Tanya Barone.
So I would like to address Tom, since he was addressing me, because I said something about the clerk's report and the additional dogs that are listed. Eighteen hundred and thirty-five dollars for additional dogs, still don't know what that exactly is. Maybe Liz can tell me after the meeting is over. But we do have, I believe from my memory, additional dogs on a line item on our budget for dog sheltering expenses. And you know what, Tom can sit and he can look stupid. Thank you. We think like, because the arrogance from a professional person that has been hired by the city doesn't look good to the residents, because not all that we have to say up here, I mean, we want facts, we want answers, okay? That might not, those are questions, okay? It doesn't mean that we get up here to spread lies and rumors, although some people would like to portray that. We want answers, so if someone wants to stick around and talk about what additional dogs means, and what eighteen hundred dollars is, then by all means. But we have a complete shit show going on in the city, and I'm going to be frank, between the four trees that we still know, that, nothing, nothing came of that. We have just people doing willy-nilly stuff in this administration. No sketch of the dog shelter, the dog shelter still is not open, the R F P isn't out, it's still not up and running, four million dollars later, expensive equipment going in there, now we got Hyde Park is a, is a complete shit show too. The Ice Pavilion, has anyone been following that? I mean, that is disgusting mess over there, okay? They don't have tournaments going, the equipment's all broken, there's glass being put in there, there's security cameras, there's all kinds of furniture being brought in. I'm hearing that the guy is not even paying rent over there, because he's paying for stuff, and then he's just kind of like getting a free pass. But if that is the case, why are we allowing all of that? So for us to sit here and question where our money is going, and who's spending what, and who's doing what? That, that shouldn't be us being targeted and looked at like we're doing something bad. We're sitting here shaking our heads going, I can't believe these people make these kind of decisions. And we have a mayor that just goes on his weekly address, and we have Chairman Perry going on a podcast yesterday with Sam Archie, who's not a reputable person, and talking about maybe the dog shelter, he went through it, and it apparently ain't going to be open till the end of the year? Now, this is just, if you don't want a circus, then don't create a circus, please, like, that's not professional, Tom.
Thank you.
Seriously, and Perry too.
So just, just to clarify, at the last meeting, when Ms. Barone made the statements about dog overages, they weren't questions, they were allegations, they were not questions.
I got that already, Tom, I realized that.
Can, can we call the next speaker for the good of the community, please?
Janine Gallow?
Thank you.
You're on. Speak state.
You're on.
No, 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 the bad, the bad.
Sixty-three thousand dollars.
Did you start my clock? Hello? Okay, okay, well, we'll, first of all, I don't understand how rules change. I thought, I've gone to council meetings, I've never seen an attorney lecture people, or be able to talk and just run the whole show. It's a bunch of crap. I'm so used to your crap, Tom, with, well, if you don't vote now, the price could go up. Just like the streetlights in the city that was a grant. But he had, you had to sign it, because the grant, it was free, would go up if you didn't sign it. Every document that comes through here is never signed. Why do you vote on something that's not signed? It should be a rule. If it's not signed, it shouldn't be on the agenda, it shouldn't be addressed until it is completely signed. I know, I know. Okay, fifty-seven thousand dollars, you still don't know what for, but you voted yes. Someone put a flyer out, his campaign was transparency. That's a bunch of crap, that's a fact, that's not gossip, that's not starting trouble. Transparency of what, you vote yes for everything. He's got new council coming in, she's already a puppet, and she's not even up there. She's going to put you to shame, she'll just use different lines. She won't probably get hundreds of emails, I got tons of emails, so that's why I'm voting yes.
I got tons of emails, so that's why I'm voting yes. It's just on and on and on of crap. You know, the trees, the seventy-seven thousand, they're not going to go over the seventy-seven thousand of what? Just like the trees, the two hundred and fifty thousand last year. Well, they can't, they can only cut up, they can't go past two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, if they cut three trees, they're done. The asbestos, can't go over two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, well, what if extra houses burn? It just, it's just lie after lie after lie. I thought he was Pinocchio. If they were walking in a room, they have to walk fifty feet apart if they wanted to turn to talk to each other. They'd knock each other out with their fucking noses. It's just ridiculous that you think people are stupid. You've become the biggest puppet. All seventy-two pounds of you have become the biggest puppets in Niagara Falls, and I understand, I understand. You're not a big time attorney, so you just do whatever the mayor says, and he pays you very well. I understand. But enough is enough with the clowning around. The dog shelter, the one in Grand Island, they added the city of Tonawanda to those ten kennels, and even if they had more, isn't it funny the pit chick is involved? Okay, she didn't resign from Niagara Falls, she didn't, she got booted out of there. So, they made, they're hiding her somewhere else. But there she is, there she is. Keep laughing, Tom. Fucking pussy.